Good evening. Welcome to the January 17th, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Livonia Public Schools' Board of Education. This evening's meeting is a committee of the whole meeting and by that we mean this is a discussion-type meeting. There will be about five items that we are aware of that are coming up for discussion this evening. The items that have been brought before the board tonight have been brought before us at last week's study session and if the board determines that we are ready to vote on these items after our discussion this evening, we will be voting on them at next week's meeting, which will be January 23rd, I believe. So if you're looking for discussion, you've tuned into the right meeting. If you're looking for final votes on these items, that will take place next week. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to approach the board at this time to participate in Audience Communications? Seeing none, we will go on. Our next item on our agenda, by the way, if you are here in the audience and you'd like to have a copy of our agenda, they can be found just outside the door on the table. If you're following along at home and you'd like to have an agenda before you, they can be found on our website, which can be found at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along with this evening's agenda. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 2, Committee of the Whole, and Item A is Discussion Regarding Board Officers. As is customary with our Board of Education, we reelect our own officers each January and we will be doing so, having that discussion this evening. We had some preliminary discussion in our study session last week and we'll be voting on those officers next week. So this evening we'll just be having some discussion about interest and so forth. So are there anyone, is there anybody who's interested in the Office of President for the Board of Education for next, this coming calendar year of 2017? Or is she in putting a fourth name before that? Mrs. Bonfield?
I think I would like to ask that President Burton remain on, considering the spectacular job that she's done and that we are in the middle of several things that it would be great if you could carry those through.
I would be happy to do so if that's how the board would like me to serve. If not, then I'd be happy to step down and definitely support another individual in that role. Are there any other thoughts on that?
I agree with Mrs. Bonfield. I think you should stay on.
Okay. All righty.
I also agree. It's certainly challenging to be a spokesperson for seven people. I think you've done a very nice job. I think our board has made a lot of tough decisions and your leadership has been really valuable in those decisions, so I'm excited to have you staying on for another year.
Well, thank you very much. I am humbled with such kind comments coming from a group that I have such high respect for. Again, we'll handle a vote on that next week. I don't know if there are any other questions or comments or anything, or if there's anybody else who would like to nominate another individual. All righty. Seeing none, again, we will, Mrs. Bonfield, will you please put that on the agenda for next week for a voting item?
Yes.
For the Office of Vice President, we'll go through the same procedure. Is there anybody who would like to nominate an individual as Vice President? Actually nominate, I guess, is not the proper terminology for tonight. Discuss that nomination. Yes, Mr. Centers.
I think Mark Johnson would do a very nice job as Vice President of the Board. Obviously, he has experience as Board President, Chairman of Building Insight. Mark's a very thoughtful, very measured individual. He's a good leader for the Board, in my opinion.
Other thoughts? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I will agree with Dan. I think that Mr. Johnson would be a fine Vice President and his experience and his grace under fire will carry him well. I also think that in your absence-
That's fear. That's fear.
In your absence, he would do an admirable job.
All righty. Thank you. Mrs. Bradford?
I agree. I think Mark would do a great job serving as Vice President for the next year.
I concur completely with my colleagues. I would be thrilled to have Mr. Johnson serve in that role. He has served as our President for two years prior to my taking this seat, done a wonderful job, and you can only do a good job as President, I believe, if you have followed behind some good, strong people who have led the way. And Mr. Johnson has definitely done that and I would be thrilled to have him continue on as our Vice President for this year. Would, are there any other thoughts regarding Vice President? No, all righty. Are there any other, any thoughts regarding the Secretary of the Board position?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
I think, you know, I think Tammy's done a wonderful job. It's a difficult position. A lot of people don't realize how tough that job is. That was the first office I held and it takes a lot of attention to detail and she's done a great job. Going forward, I'd like to request that Dan step into that position. I think he's shown us his ability to pay attention to detail and I think he'd make a great Secretary.
Sounds good. Other comments or thoughts on the position of Secretary? Mrs. Bradford?
I have to agree. Being a Secretary, I've been a Secretary on several PTAs. It takes a lot of time and sometimes you just need a little break on that, so it's good to have a switch-up. So I think Dan would be a great person in the role of Secretary.
All righty. I agree. Mrs. Bonfield has held the position for two years and it would probably be a welcome break to be able to have discussion without having to write everything down along the way. Mr. Centers, I fully support your desire to serve in the role of Secretary also. I think it will continue to have a very strong Board and strong leadership of our Board.
Thank you. Thank you for the guidance.
Any other thoughts? Also, I failed to mention Mrs. Frank is going to be joining us momentarily. She had a family obligation, but she will be joining us at any time now, so. Any other questions or comments or thoughts on officer positions for next week? And Mrs. Bonfield, if you could write down all three of those as three separate votes for next week. All righty. We're going to go on to our next item, Item 3, Building Insight, and I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson at this time.
President Burton-
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Oh, question.
Mrs. Wozniak asked if we would consider an item this evening that would, has been requested to be on the agenda for next week. It's in regard to classes, Board of, continuing Board classes. And so since those requests have come in, since the time the agenda was written, if you don't mind, as a point of privilege-
Absolutely. Go right ahead. Please do.
I'd like to add Item 2B, Registration for CBA Classes for Board Members. So I'll just give a brief update on that.
Please do. Go ahead.
Next week, we'd like to bring forward a request for Trustee Frank to attend CBA 106, Community Relations Leadership Class on February 10th, 2017, for the total amount of $90, and for Trustee Bradford to attend CBA 106, Community Relations Leadership, on February 10th, 2017, also in the amount of $90. As you know, per our Board policy, in order to provide registration for that via the district, those requests and approvals must be made in advance. So in order to make that deadline for the February 10th date, we'd like to ask to put that on the agenda for the January 23rd Board of Education Voting Meeting.
You're good.
Could that be your approval to do so?
Absolutely. Also, if there are other members of the Board who would like to take classes that weekend, take a look at that. I know they've been sent out via email a few times, but please do take a look at that and if you have any classes that you'd like to register for, if you could let Jill know prior to our Thursday packet, that way we can make sure that those are listed in our Thursday packet and be voted upon. And those would all be voted upon as one voting item for Board members to attend classes. So take a look. Those are wonderful classes. And if members of the public are not aware of what we're discussing in detail, the Michigan Association of School Board provides an extensive network of classes for Board members all over the state of Michigan. It's open to all Board members who are members of MASP and they vary their location throughout the state to try to make it convenient to have educated Boards. Seeing as nobody comes to this Board, or rarely do we have an individual, Mrs. Laura was an exception. She came back to us as a returning Board member from years past, but rarely do we have a Board member who has served on a Board of Education before. So having the responsibility that we have of oversight of such a large organization, I feel that it's, my personal opinion is it's absolutely necessary for Board members to educate themselves. And one wonderful resource is the Michigan Association of School Boards. We are well on our way to becoming what is called an Honor Board, which is all of our Board members being certified Board members, which is taking the first nine courses of basic understanding of all of our responsibilities. So I thank my fellow Board members for taking the time and effort, because that's time away from home. Those are usually weekend and evening classes. So I thank the rest of those of you who are sitting at this table with us for making sure that you're educated enough to serve this district really, really well and encourage anyone who's thinking about Board service to know that that's part of the game. And if you're serving on a Board in another community, I certainly encourage you to do the same. So are there any other items or any other discussion on this item? All righty. And that's going to be on the regular agenda then for next week? Okay. Back to Building Insight.
Thank you, President Burton. We have four items in Building Insight tonight. First is replacement of multi-function copiers and printers under 2013 bond. Second would be recommendation to purchase a Genie scissors lift, again, under the 2013 bond. Next would be recommendation to purchase van shells, once again, under the 2013 bond, and for the purchase of a Ford F-350 with a plow. So our first item will be related to the copiers. And we have Mr. Francis here with a whole group of folks.
Your friends and friends.
Is this your-
I brought muscle. I got one.
Yeah.
Is this what's known as the posse?
LeBron got nothing on me.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have to start explaining my references.
Yeah.
Well, let's just start off with, and I want to introduce actually, to begin with, Matt Lindner from Platte Marine Cressa. Today, I'm going to ask him to, we've asked him to give a brief presentation about the proposed purchase out of the 2013 bond for replacing our multi-function copiers, or multi-function devices, however it may be phrased, along with printers across the district. So we're talking the schools as well as the central office complex. Currently, our multi-function copiers that can scan and make copies and print, et cetera, are probably closer to 10 than actually eight, but we've been saying eight to 10 years and they're at the end of their time. It doesn't sound like a super-long time, but they need repair. They get an awful lot of use and an awful lot of run-through. So we asked Matt to come give a brief description of those, as well as the printers, and our plan, and Tim Clan, the Administrator of IT, will also be here to answer some of your questions about what our plan will be, and Mrs. Alice as well, about getting to the point where we replace these if we do follow through with that purchase, and how we would deploy them, and how it would be more efficient, and also costing us less money per click, as they say. So with that, I'll turn it over. Okay?
Thank you. So I'll take you through the recommendation that we've got for this purchase. So as Mr. Francis said, this is for printers and multi-function devices, so the larger copiers throughout the district. This is really looking at an upgrade of that entire solution district-wide. What we're talking about here is an aging fleet of printers and copiers. You've got something in the neighborhood of 500 printers throughout the district. We're placing and upgrading a number of those, but also downsizing that printer fleet, decommissioning close to 200 devices. And the reasoning behind this is moving that print volume into the larger devices, into the multi-function copiers, where there are lower per-click costs. So really, the overall recommendation is for 117 new multi-function copiers and 105 new printers. So go from that 500, bring in 105 new, but decommission a couple hundred of those. You can see there's still something of the old fleet that's still going to be out there and that's really just constrained from a budget perspective. From a functionality perspective, you're taking a significant step forward in functionality in the new devices that we're proposing here. Talking about, and the typical functions of these devices, scanning, copying, printing, faxing, that sort of thing, but really some more value-add functionality in the new solutions. Things like what we would call follow-me printing. So I'm a user, I send a print job and then I can go to any device in the district and say, hey, it's me, I'm ready for my print job, and it releases that print job for me. Things like control of print output for security and even control of the amount of output coming out through card access to the printers. So if I want to release my job, I go up and I swipe my card and the job gets released. If I've got sensitive information that I'm printing, there's a nice security control there. And if we've got a user out there who likes to click print over and over again, we can maybe only release the job once instead of, you know, the three or four times that the button might have been clicked. Also included in this would be a software solution that helps to track print costs, number of prints being generated by each device and by user, and really give you intelligence into how we're using devices around the district and maybe start to drive some culture change in terms of how much output we're generating and get good visibility into what our costs are around this. So that's at a very high level, what we're looking at here. From a cost perspective, there's really two components to the cost for this. There is a capital cost, which is eligible for funding from the bond, and this is for the hardware for the new devices. But inherent to any print solution is, as Mr. Francis said, per-click costs. And this is maintenance for the devices, this is consumables for the devices, ink and toner and what have you. And those are, unfortunately, cannot be paid for with bond funds and those are always general fund costs. They always have been general fund costs. The nice thing in this solution is, is in an upgrade of this environment, we're able to drive down those general fund costs considerably. The per-click costs, both at the printer side of things and at the copier side of things, are about half of what you were previously paying in the new solution. And then the overall strategy of getting rid of printers and moving this traffic onto the higher, the larger multi-function devices also drive costs down because the multi-function devices have lower per-click costs than the printers. So when we think about the costs, really what we're talking about here, from a bond perspective, the recommendation is for $1,169,697. That is essentially the budget that we have for printers and copiers in the district. Again, 117 new copiers or multi-function devices, 105 new printers is what you're getting with that. And then from a general fund perspective, those maintenance costs, those per-click costs, we're looking at an estimate based on current traffic, current volumes. Again, these are per-click costs, so we take how much you're printing on an annual basis and apply those per-click costs. We're looking at approximately $207,000 in general fund expense in the new solution. It sounds like a lot of money out of the general fund. It really is, but when you think about the current solution, you were in the neighborhood of $430,000 in general fund expense annually. So we're looking at over $220,000 in savings on the general fund with this recommendation and I think that certainly bears emphasis. We are also asking for a $50,000 contingency on this contract. I had indicated that with the capital purchase of the devices, we are pretty much chewing up the budget for printers and copiers, but we do have the contingency line in the technology budget that's got plenty of capacity for a $50,000 contingency. And this would be if we run into costs throughout the project that we didn't foresee when we were putting this design together. If we've got an area where we don't have a printer, but we really need to have one, we've got a little leeway to bring in additional devices as needed. So $50,000 contingency is what we're asking for here and we think that's appropriate. From an implementation standpoint, looking to implement devices throughout the winter and spring of this year, and it would be a matter of bringing in the new devices, getting them installed and deployed, and then a phase-out of the decommissioned devices after that. So only other thing that I wanted to bring up is this recommendation is for a purchase off of the MyDeal contract, which is a competitively bid contract through the state of Michigan. We did not go through a bid process on this, but that MyDeal contract is in place, so it essentially seeks to leverage the buying power of the entire state, drive costs down as low as they can, and we think the costs that we're getting here are competitive and that a bid would not necessarily be warranted. We have used this sort of strategy in the past on mobile learning devices and that sort of thing. That would be the last thing I think I wanted to bring up. I think we're open to any questions you can have.
Four questions. May I ask Mr. Lindner to, or any of the team, could you go through a little bit of background on how you came up with the recommendations for this total number of printers, copiers? There was extensive work done over a number of months, so if you could give the Board a little bit of background on the study that was done, the walkthroughs at the schools, the interactions with staff and things, how we came about determining the number of printers, where they would be located, et cetera?
I could speak to it, but I don't know if I'd do it justice considering that was a lot of that lab work.
So we worked with the company and we actually walked through a 12 to 14 of our buildings and went to and touched every single printer in those buildings and the copiers as well. The copiers, we had information on as far as a number of copies, I mean, obviously the copier company had that information, so we knew the volumes of each of those and where they were placed within the building. So as we walked each of those buildings and got the information sheets off the existing printers that had the total number of prints that they had on them, so that we could help calculate volumes again and what needed to be replaced and what didn't. We also, at the same time, were looking at placement of the printers and copiers within the building. So what we're replacing is all the existing copiers and we'll be adding some additional ones with this. And part of the reason for that is to try to more centrally locate those copiers within the buildings to make it a little bit easier for people to have access, especially since we'll be removing some of the 20-year-old printers that we currently have out there that might have previously been used down a certain hallway or whatever. So we've picked out locations of a lot of those buildings to place and help centrally distribute that. So there was a lot of time, I think, you know, in some cases, almost an entire day at one building as we walked through those, trying to get that information. So a lot of time was spent calculating what we needed, where we needed it, where the best place to put it would be. We've talked with teachers in those hallways in those buildings as far as where the placement would be. Many of them that currently have a printer in that hallway and would be getting a copier are very excited at that option, that they don't have to go out to the office to make their copies anymore. We've dealt with and talked with all the principals in those buildings to let them know what our plan was and what we'd be doing moving forward. And everybody seemed very excited about the change. So is that-
Not to, you're correct. But I just don't want to paint all rosy of a picture. There's going to be a transition when you start removing printers that people are used to printing on, even if they've been glitchy, even if they've been, you know, if they cost more, even if they're slower. So we do have a plan and really that plan doesn't, right now, have 100% set schedule because we want to see how it goes first with the new devices, then how it goes bringing out or pulling out some of those older 20-year-old printers. And we don't want to disrupt the high schools in the middle of final exams at the end of the school year by, you know, taking out all the copiers or something like that. So we're going to, we're going to use our pullback of some of the printers sort of judiciously and see how it goes. We want to, of course, push prints and push clicks to the multi-function devices. That's the end goal, but we also don't want to, you know, completely change the teachers' worlds overnight by removing all the items. So we discussed that.
Additionally, I mean, essentially, we'll be, once the new equipment is in, will, in many cases, that will be replacing. So a new copier may go in a certain area of one of those old printers, if there is one in that place, that would come out at that time. But any of the other printers that are out there would stay. We would just stop support on those as far as repairing them at that point and as they start to drop off, we would take them out. And then we'll look at a point a little further down the road over the summer where we might be able to go in and take out. We want to make sure that initially we have all the new equipment going in and we make sure that's up and running and working well before we start going in and trying to remove any of the existing equipment that people might have.
Given that this is an implementation that's going to be happening while school's still in session, the phase-out makes sense to minimally disrupt operations in the buildings. So get the new devices in their hands, get people using them, and then phase-out to not disrupt any more.
And many, and many of those printers, over the years, I mean, how do we end up with 20-year-old printers? We, you know, there's a printer in the main office and it's functioning, but it's getting old and they replace that printer. And since it's still working, they say, well, hey, so-and-so down the hall could use one and it gets passed down the hall to somebody who maybe didn't have one before. And then that somehow continues, continues to go on. They get handed down from location to location and as long as they're still functioning, we've kept them. But obviously, the costs associated with maintaining equipment that that's, that is that old ends up-
Because our department has been maintaining them.
Yes.
And that's, you know, that's time, that's money, it's potentially parts, et cetera, that's been worked on.
Yes. And in addition, we'll be putting one color copier into each building, into their main office, so that the main office will have some control over what's being printed, as well as the fact that with the follow-me printing, any printers that goes to those printers will have to, you know, as they swipe, it'll log, you know, who's been printing and how much, if needed. But that was, we thought that was essential to put that ability for people in the buildings to have color because it's important to all the buildings. And many of those buildings have gone out and purchased colored printers and things on their own. Toner costs are very expensive for those and many of them have, that have bought them and put them out in the building have kind of had to pull them back and in some cases don't use them any longer because the toner's so expensive. They either let it run out and don't refill it, or they'll pull it back to the office and maintain a couple of color copiers in locations where they can keep better track on what's being printed. So we thought that putting one full-size copier that's also capable of doing color in each of those buildings would give them all access to one reliable piece of color printing equipment, so.
In such a manner that you can control the usage of them?
Yeah. The point would be as in need, not because everything looks cooler in color.
Well, that's the guy sitting there with a bunch of color printers.
Yes.
Are there other questions?
Questions? Tammy?
So the annual cost is going to be about $207,000.
Correct.
Does that include warranty and service work?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
And is there, is it just an ongoing maintenance agreement where it's not necessarily a three-year warranty, it's just an ongoing maintenance agreement?
Correct.
And who, is there an outside company that we're having come in to do all that maintenance for?
Yep, this will be through Rico.
Okay. And their people will come in and do the servicing?
Yep.
Okay. And then I guess the question goes to some of the personal printers and stuff. You know, I guess who, you said they've been pulling back the color printers and stuff because the toner is so expensive and that they've purchased themselves. Has that been going through the school's supply budget to-
Typically.
Typically.
I think for the larger laser printers that they, that the school has purchased, the school's been purchasing the toner for those, which in some cases it's $500 for a set of those toner cartridges. They're not, and you can buy the printer for $500.
Oh, yeah.
So, but in some cases, there may be some color printers out there that perhaps a teacher or department purchased and they purchased the ink on their own.
Okay.
And, you know, if it's just connected up to their machine, it's not a, it may not be a piece of equipment that we support or maintain.
Okay. So there's probably going to be some pieces of equipment out there that maybe a teacher brought in because they like to have it, but they are paying to maintain that and keep all the-
Right. If it's a personal purchase that they brought in, we don't maintain it, we don't support it.
Or network it. Or network it.
Or network it, right. That would be something that somebody plugged into their USB, you know, cable on the-
The numbers that we discuss are all networked items.
Yep.
If you walked and did a literal count, there'll be more printers in buildings. It's one that, as Mr. Clan just described, the bond brought in.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Mr. Centers.
When we make a lot of large purchases, a lot of times we do them in installments so that in 10 years, we don't have a whole set of updated printers. Is that, we're doing the whole purchase now with one group. Is that advisable, in your opinion?
Yeah, so we see that very often in these sorts of procurements for printers and copiers just due to getting consistency into the environment. You get into a set maintenance agreements. The maintenance agreement that we talked about is these general fund costs that we're talking about are locked in for five years for the entire environment. And you don't typically see the refresh, the staggered refresh schedule in these types of devices that you would in computers or other end-user devices, just due to the- just due to the nature of the maintenance and support agreements and other factors.
Okay.
I think on the user end too, you, you know, if we did some buildings and others or some departments and others, you have the follow-me print and it doesn't follow them because we don't have the entire network done.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. It's certainly something we always look at because we talk about it, whether it's roofs, boilers, whatever it is, you don't want everything to expire at the same time. I think the challenge is, is a lot of these devices, we've already hit that endpoint and may not have the three- to five-year wait time. The other piece is, is we are not replacing all of the printers. And so there is still some ability to continue that replacement cycle, but we would need to do that if there were remaining funds in the bond at the end. So we've expended the total for this, for the entire district purchase. But we do still have some devices. So I foresee that we may have some additional purchases potentially going forward. And if we don't, then we'll need to just continue to monitor this closely. But we really are at near end-of-life on or at for most of our devices.
Great, thank you.
Is installation slash setup and training part of this whole purchase?
Yes, yes, there's the installation, removal of the old equipment, the configuration for the follow-me printing and us being able to import all our staff information into the system so that it'll recognize the cards for the card readers, et cetera. There's training allotted for each building so that they can set up time, whether it be at lunch, after school, to run through and do training with the staff as to how to use the new equipment.
Okay, and then when I think of just my own, either at home or at my office or whatever, inevitably, when you hit print, it's sending it to the wrong printer or one that's defunct.
Right.
What's going to happen to prevent at least the majority of that?
Right, so any printers that will be coming out, those print drivers will be removed. That are being removed. The nice part about the follow-me printing is that essentially there's one print driver that they can print to because it doesn't matter which machine they go to to pick it up. They don't have to say, I want to print to the main office copier. They print to the RICO, follow-me, whatever we call that. And then any printer, any of the new printers or any of the copiers in the buildings that they go to, they can swipe their card and retrieve their prints from them.
Yeah, so the actual printers themselves, the small ones, have the same software in them. So it could be a printer or the multi-function device and it'll come out. So that expands the ability of what an employee might print to go to different areas.
Okay, so just so I understand this better, does it not print until they're physically present in front of the machine? Okay, so you don't have seven people's stuff sitting around trying to sort through it and figure out?
You'll see additional savings that we didn't put in here too, as well as with, that people print things and either don't pick them up or they print things and somebody else picks it up and they have to print it again. Or as they had mentioned, they print several times and because they didn't think it printed, but they were printing to the wrong printer and now it came out somewhere else. And so, yeah, that helps for that secure printing piece as well as people not losing their prints after they've been sent.
So I initially thought it was an option of that, but you're saying it's every time you've got to go to the printer and swipe and then you get your prints?
Yes, wherever it's, wherever you've, yeah.
Wherever you've sent it, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So every employee will have a card that they need to swipe?
It's their existing ID badge, which they should all have and be wearing.
Okay, so if, let's say, a PTA person or another person comes into the building and they need to make copies for their meeting or something of that nature, how will they make their copies?
I believe the building would have access to some sort of a card as well, if I'm not mistaken.
So that will cut down on anybody coming in and just going into a copier and making copies?
Anonymously.
Correct.
Prevent people from coming in and just making copies, yeah.
Okay, so you will have to see somebody that has a card or swiper in order to make any type of copies?
Much greater control on the output, much greater control on the costs.
Okay.
It's a cultural change.
Yes, that's going to be difficult.
For staff and buildings, but it's in the direction that we do want to...
Because a lot of times, parents will be in the building volunteering to make copies for teachers and things like that. I'm just curious to find out how they will be able to access those computers. Will the teacher have to give their personal swipe card to another parent, I guess? That's what I'm asking.
And we'll want to work through some of those things and make sure that buildings have the ability to have legitimate guests.
Volunteer badges.
Okay.
And we will have in certain instances, so in each of the computer labs, a new printer will be getting installed and it'll have the follow-me option on it. So if teachers want to come down there and print something, they can. But with a student lab full of students and they go to print, obviously, the students aren't going to swipe for each of the things they print off. So those will have the ability to print directly to those machines as well without the follow-me option in those types of instances where either there's a student in the lab or perhaps there's a secretary who sits right next to the printer. You know, we don't necessarily need her to be able to swipe every time. We can, we have that option to set those up to print directly as well if needed.
Other questions?
Just as, coming from the PTA realm, I don't know that we have a district policy on PTA copies, that sort of thing for meetings, I'm not sure. But just to think about what we're gonna, how we're gonna handle it, not just a guest, but maybe a PTA badge or something like that that we could have that is delineated. This is PTA, this is how we handle it, just so that they know that they're doing service for the school, that we are not cutting them off from making copies, just that we, they have the ability to continue to make it in their meetings and that sort of thing. So we're still continuing to support them as well as them supporting us.
And you'll have that capability. And the nice thing is it brings it back to a policy decision in terms of who you provide that access to. You'll have the ability to provide access to whoever the district sees fit to provide that access to. And it's just the policy question of how that gets administered.
And I believe as well, if a teacher forgets their ID or doesn't have it at that time, I believe they can also log into the machine normally, you know, with their user ID and also be able to access their items that way as well.
Just along that same line, I know from thinking back to my days as a substitute, sometimes your life tends to do on off-hours. And again, maybe the ability for some substitute teachers to run copies for teachers.
Sure, yeah.
We certainly don't want to, yeah, we don't want to hinder those types of things. These are all good ideas and pieces that will...
Yeah, and I'm confident in probably in other districts that have implemented this, we would, you know, certainly be able to garner from both the company and from those folks, you know, some process and procedures, new to us, but not new to the market, marketplace.
Other questions? Good, because I've got a whole bunch. Hopefully, it won't take too long. With the amount that we're proposing to spend out of the bond fund, once this purchase is made, what's left in the technology portion of the bond? Do we know?
Overall budget, technology portion of the bond?
Yes.
Not off the top of my head, but I know that we had had discussions about coming back to you sometime in February for an overall technology update, including the budget update. I don't know the number off the top of my head, though.
We can get it to you in the update this week.
Absolutely, and we can get it to you prior to coming back in February as well.
Okay. Following up on Mr. Centers' question about maybe staggering, if we, say, five years from now or whatever, we get to the point where some of those other machines are, need to be replaced, some of the other printers. And if there's no more bond money, I'm presuming under the way the sinking fund funds now, that would come out of sinking funds?
It could come out of sinking fund if the voters in our district renewed a sinking fund request a couple of years from now. It cannot be retroactive to current sinking fund dollars. So it can only be done once voters have approved, once again, the most current sinking fund. And then moving forward, you can use those funds with the assumption being that when people voted on that, they voted on it as a pay-as-you-go maintenance and repair. Now that they've added buses, technology, et cetera, you need to give voters an opportunity to know that that's why those funds can be used. So you're absolutely right. In the future, in that timeframe you were just talking about, the five-year timeframe, we would hope we would have moved into another phase of the sinking fund and would be able to consider those dollars for replacement and repair.
Okay.
Just to throw out a piece, and we certainly, this is, the number that we have, though, just so you know, that when they worked up the numbers of printers and copiers, it's done, even with the older ones aside, et cetera, it's done to a ratio that would be an appropriate ratio even just of themselves. So the plan is, we have plenty of options to print and copy, but even just looking at the numbers that we're looking to purchase, if that's all we had in the district, that would still be an appropriate ratio of staff to print opportunities.
Okay. With regard to the ones that we're replacing, what's happening to those devices that are being removed? Are we recycling those?
There's actually a trading credit that is being received as a part of this contract. It's in the neighborhood of $27,000 that you'll be getting back as a part of this contract. But that's included in the numbers that I gave you.
Not much value in...
And that's on copiers.
Boat anchors, that type of thing.
The printers will be recycled.
Okay, okay. Are all the multi-function devices in the printers all of the same speed or are they varied?
Varied speed, size to the needs of the building based on that discovery activity that was going on in terms of walking the buildings and figuring out what print volumes were in buildings. And, you know, there's a spectrum of different models that are going in of various sizes and speeds and capabilities.
Is the speed faster on these, on the new devices?
Yes.
Generally, any idea, quantify how much faster they are roughly?
I think we're in the, what, 50 to 60 page per minute?
Per minute?
On the new ones, it's as high as 75.
Yeah, up to 75.
That's pretty good. Some of the devices, I wouldn't think printers do, but maybe the multi-function devices, do they have hard drives in them presently?
Yes, the current devices?
The card devices?
I don't know that I can speak to, probably.
Current devices, I believe they do.
Yeah.
What are we doing with the hard drives?
Typically, when we remove those devices, the hard drives are returned to us for destruction.
Okay, and then we have a way of eliminating those, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you may have hit on, what's the lifespan of the new equipment?
So we didn't really touch on it. I mean, it's a five-year maintenance agreement. I think you could look to stretch this solution out in the seven to 10-year range. That's what you're going to want to start thinking about. It's time to start looking at these things again. Again, you're in that eight to 10-year range right now and you're at end-of-life in your environment.
Yeah, and I think in general, depending on how you look at it, I think industry-wide, you might be in that three to five-year is a typical lifespan for the devices. In education or school districts, we tend to extend that out considerably and we're more in that, you know, eight-year range probably.
Should have called that, I had that factor on my...
The devices that we have and the printers we have now, I'm making an assumption that they're sort of mix and match, they're not all the same?
There's, the devices were, the copy devices were all purchased, I believe, at about the same time. So there were a few different models that were out there, maybe two or three different models around the district. The printers of the 495 printers that we have out there, around 400 of them were the HP 4000, HP 4050 series printers that were all 18 to 20 years old. Those were all purchased at about the same time and we had a couple of models. Now, buildings have purchased individual machines since then. So there are newer devices out there in that HP line, but the majority of what we have out there, 400 of the 500, were the HP 4000s or 4050s, which are in that 18 to 21-year-old range right now.
Did that go for the multi-function devices that we have as well? Are they all typically the same?
The copier, which is just smaller output versus the larger output. They're all the same types across the building.
The copiers, though, we're still talking about?
Yeah, just to clarify, are you talking about like a smaller multi-function printer or the copiers?
Yes, a smaller multi-function printer.
There weren't many of those.
Yeah.
Of, I mean, like I said, there could be a few scattered out within that 100 that aren't the HP 4000s or 4050s.
And not a lot of consistency.
Yeah, it was, it was, wherever the building happened to have purchased during those times. There's a few of those out there, but not a lot of them.
What was the biggest factor in going with RICO?
I think one of the, one of the main reasons, we've had the RICO equipment for eight years. We've been extremely happy with the service, the reliability of the equipment, how quickly they're able to come in when we do have issues and the options that they were able to offer on that equipment, the follow-me printing, the some of the additional features that the new line of equipment had.
Okay.
That's it?
Any other questions? I mean, my Sterling questions didn't...
So I just want to be sure that the one question we're going to get back for this Thursday's packet for the board is the overall technology budget, the amount remaining after this purchase?
After this purchase, yeah.
Okay, if you can get that.
I'll send that to you tomorrow.
We have more mobile devices to purchase.
Yes.
Two more years of mobile devices.
So don't spend it all.
Okay, then we'll put this on regular agenda. All right, very good. Thank you, great information, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I don't think Phil's...
Yeah, we didn't, sorry. Rob Gregor from Barton Mail was also with us. And Sheila Ellis, as I had mentioned, was with us, were with us as well. Thank you for coming and sitting in with us.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, team. It was a lot of work to get to that recommendation.
Sorry, Rob.
All right, then we'll move on to 3B.
Just going back, I do want to thank all of them, though, generally. And Tim and his team really led up, they did a ton of legwork. I frankly jumped in partway through and I really want to thank Mrs. Alice because she led this off through the academic services department and IT and got the ball rolling with the research, with, you know, the getting the companies in, going through the process. So I want to thank all of them for really putting in a ton of work on it.
Okay, then we'll move to 3B, the purchase of Genie scissors lift. Mr. Francis?
Yes. I'd like to recommend for purchase, one Genie 2632 scissor lift. It is, has been bid out and the low recommended bidder was McAllister Rentals out of Wixom, Michigan at the cost of $14,107. And the scissor lift, which I know we had spoken briefly about at our study session, is a machine that we don't have in this district currently. The maintenance department, and that would include working on HVAC, that would include plumbers, the electricians, any work that would be done overhead or at above eight feet or above, really could use an item such as this scissor lift. What we currently do is if we have work that's elevated, the best item that we have is similar to, it's not the same as the scissor lift. The scissor lift has the wheels and the control that you see different companies have. They'll lower a little bit and they'll ride it forward. It can turn on a dime because all the wheels turn in all direction. What we have currently is a lift that you have to stabilize the legs on. So it is not mobile. You set that up, set it, level it, and then you lift up. You do your work, you come back down, you bring up the legs and so you unstabilize it, you move it to your next area, you bring the large legs out again, stabilize it again, get back in, and you lift up. So as an example, if an electrician were working on the lights and we actually did this at Franklin, we had some lights in one of the music rooms that they were working on, our electrician went over and we actually borrowed, there was a company that happened to be there and we said, hey, can you borrow that? And they did it and it took him a fraction of the time, not because it took him any less time to do the actual electrical work, it took him a whole lot less time to come down, restabilize, get back up. So it's an efficiency, it's a matter of being able to get on the spot at a building that we need across the district. So we wouldn't be giving this out to anybody. We wouldn't just, you know, give it to the building and say, go ahead and use it. Harry Lau, the administrator of facilities and operations, will be having a team of his maintenance folks, like I said, electricians, HVAC, plumbers, trained annually. They get certified in the use of it. So if you're not trained and certified in it annually, you don't use it, you don't maneuver it. So we're going to make sure that it's only used by our people who have been trained. So again, we wouldn't just take the lift and, you know, tell one of our buildings, come get it and borrow it for a week. Only folks who have been trained on it. That was important for me to find out and we had discussed that, Harry and I did. We want to make sure that they're trained. Couple pieces of information, because we did have some questions last week about how it would get around. It would go in a trailer. We would place in a trailer. We do need to purchase the... We do need to purchase the trailer, but it would be a general fund purchase, about $8,000. It's not something that would be coming to the board. But, again, for the efficiency and speed and sort of being Johnny on the spot with the jobs, it would be a very big help for the team. One other item I wanted to address, and I'm not sure if anybody asked it, but we did get the information, a life expectancy on this, and this is sort of the beauty of it. There's not a lot of moving parts on these things that necessarily break down, and you're not beating it up like a plow or a tractor. It's got about a 25-year life expectancy on it. So, if we have it and maintain it, we should have it for quite some time.
One other question, Mr. Francis, I believe you've addressed really just about all of them from last week. One was, would it be cheaper to rent versus purchase? If you could address that one?
Sure, a couple of items about rent versus purchase. One is, first of all, just from a practical standpoint, having an item ready to go and to send your electrician or send your plumber out to get the job done is more efficient than having to set up to rent one out. On a financial end of it, we can purchase this, we would have to rent out of general fund, and we can purchase out of bond as a piece of equipment. So, that's from a financial end, makes more sense. And with the life expectancy on it, we should be having this for a good, long time. So, there are some real advantages, both practically and financially, with regard to purchasing it versus looking to rent one.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Couple of questions, Mr. Francis. Firstly, you mentioned that we would have employees trained on it. Who will do that training?
I believe that Mr. Lau is the certified trainer. He has his certificates and items. If it's not him, he would be setting up with someone to come in. So, you have to run through the safety protocols, et cetera, and be certified. I will get you confirmation of whether it would be Harry or whether Harry's bringing in someone. So, I'll get your confirmation on that.
Okay, so, if he is certified, is he authorized to certify other trainees?
Correct, that would be, if he is, he would do it. If not, he would set up. So, I'll confirm with you, it would be one of those two options.
Okay. And also, I noticed on the letter from McAllister that the quote is good until 2017. Has that price changed?
We would have to confirm with them if anything has happened with the manufacturer to change the pricing before we actually follow through on the purchase. So, once we contact them with PO, we would confirm whether we have the same pricing or not.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bradford?
Yes, is there a warranty on this machinery? I mean, is there repair, or would there be any, I guess you can't say if there'd be repair, but will there be a warranty on it?
Yeah, I'll check on a warranty, but anything mechanically that we could do, our own guys could, oftentimes with many of the equipment that we have, our guys tend to...
Know how to do it.
Yeah, fix our items, but I'll check on what type of warranty it comes with, okay?
Okay.
Other questions? Mrs. Frank?
It is from the rental, McAllister Rentals, but is this a new equipment? This is brand-new, correct?
Any other questions? Just a point, when you talked about rental versus purchase, I just did a quick characterization. If the lifespan is 25 years, the cost is like $560 a year. You're going to, if you rent a couple of times a year, you're going to exceed that.
Right, right.
So, I would think the cost is, this is much better than a rental.
Oh, I guess I have another question.
Yes.
Would this be, like, utilized to change light bulbs, things like that, or is you already have equipment to change light bulbs in field houses, or what?
No, that would actually be an excellent use for in a field house. Like you mentioned, something in here, it wouldn't be...
Correct.
I don't mean down, obviously wouldn't bring it down here, but at this height, might not make as much sense, but generally, eight feet or higher, anything on a wall or above head, eight or higher, it might make more sense to use, also depending on how many. So, if you were in a field house, working on multiple lights across it, this would be ideal to be able to move along as long as it had the height to get there.
Okay, and you said it would need a trailer, and you said the trailer money would come out of the general fund, is that right? You wouldn't have to vote on that? That's not additional?
Right, that would come out of the maintenance budget, and they would use that for a myriad of other items.
Yeah, this would be...
Not just simply, it wouldn't be dedicated to the Genie scissor lift. It would be utilized for any items to go to any of our 30-plus facilities.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bonnefield?
So, the big thing that they use now with the big flippy lights?
We'll still have that.
Is that, but is that, is that sort of the same thing, like, we have one of them, and it hangs out in the maintenance department, and then it goes out, or are there a bunch of those around the district?
I'll check in on our inventory of that.
I'm just, because, yeah, I'm thinking about everybody wanting to share it, the logistics of that, and they may already be doing that if we've only got a couple of the flippy things.
And only certain people will be able to use it, so it wouldn't be a real shareable device. It would be, you know, I can already tell you, our electrician will be trained on it because he's going to be an obvious person. Some of our HVAC guys will be trained on it because we have very large machines, and plumbing, because that would be some overhead work when it's in the ceiling. So, that would really be a few of the major spots that we foresee being used.
Okay.
President Burton?
How tall does this thing go? I mean, is I...
It's on a platform to begin with, and then according to its specs, it has a work height of 32.
Okay, so that is or isn't tall enough to hit the ceiling of our field house?
Yeah, a field house probably is too, potentially too high. I can't, I don't know the exact height of it, but something like one of our classrooms, like I was mentioning, the idea that they used in the Franklin room, it was perfect for that because they did have a row of lights that they're working on, and they could just inch it forward. So, it was much more efficient.
Okay.
Than ladders, et cetera.
It would not work in the field house.
I'd have to find out what our height of a field house is unless...
I'm just curious, how do they currently change light bulbs in the field house?
Well, they're...
These scissor lifts come in multiple models, and obviously, the bigger the rig, the higher
it will, it will go.
Okay.
And so, if a company were to come out and work on it, they would have potentially a larger, a larger rig. But for our purposes, the maintenance department has deemed this to be an acceptable, appropriate use for items and buildings around the district.
Height or whatever, good height.
So, you know, if you took an exterior of this building and wanted to get up to the second floor to do something on the window or whatnot, that would be a perfect item.
Okay.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I'm guessing that with the recent changes in the lighting in the field house, is switching to LEDs with the head shut off and everything, that we won't be replacing that quite often?
I agree, I agree.
That is our expectation, certainly. That is a significant investment.
I'm not running to Home Depot to get new bulbs for you.
We would agree that that's a long-term investment.
Okay, any other questions? If not, put this, ready, agree, regular agenda? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
That'll take us to 3C, recommendation to purchase ban shells, 2013.
Ban shells, let me get this package. I'm going to pass a few things around. What you'll receive, and I'm going to start with Mrs. Jarvis, is a, this is not exactly what we're having, only a sense that the main picture that I have is a larger stage. So, we are having 10 walls, and then the top, the ceiling height of it, will be very similar to this look. However, if you sit and count these walls, I got a bit more than 10. I got, I think, 12 or 14, or whatever it was. So, but it's, it's the same idea. I had, he sent me a couple of pictures, I can't remember what I grabbed. But essentially, the ban shell, and I know, I guess I should back up and just start over. We're looking to recommend a purchase of ban shells for the three performing arts centers at the three high schools, Franklin, Stevenson, and Churchill. We have Wegner Corporation, we went out for bid. Wegner Corporation had been the only response to that bid at $118,283 each, so times three, for a total of $354,849. This was a planned purchase out of the bond to go with the performing arts centers that are, have been built, are currently being built at the three high schools. The ban shell, obviously for acoustical purposes, is used on the stage of the performing arts centers. Now, in that bid, we did have the one Wegner respond. We did not move immediately on that response because we wanted to see, could we get more, more companies involved? Could we get, receive more bids? Doing some digging, our team started calling some of the other vendors that create these manufacturers that create the ban shells. There aren't many of them. There are a total of, let's see here, five that exist, and we have found that Wegner is actually purchasing two of them. So, it's a small, I don't know if niche is the right term, but there's not a lot, not a lot of these out there. So, after some research, after discussing with our team, with Plant, Moran, Cressa, and trying to figure out what direction do we go in, we also called Wegner and said, "If we bid it again, you know, what will happen?" And they said, "We gave you our Buy For Michigan network price, that's another bid format. We are a member of the Buy For Michigan." Said, "That is as low as we go. That is our price driven down by the full bid process." So, we decided to bring the recommendation from Wegner because we don't, it's a good price, it's been advised that that is a reasonable price for ban shells of this size. We wrote the bid as such that they would bring them to us as our packs were completed, so we don't have to store the extra two. We can get them as the packs are done, so Franklin's done, when Stevenson's done, we can get that one and take delivery, and when Churchill's is done, we can take delivery. So, we were very comfortable moving forward. I know that the folks at the high schools who use the performing arts centers are excited at the idea of having a ban shell. So, that's sort of the background on that. I wanted to go over some of it, just to, I honestly had a little trouble imagining it myself, and if you ever Google ban shell, don't, stop yourself, because about 8 million things come up, and every one of them's different. So, ours will look more along the lines of the walls, and I'll pass these around. You'll see, again, not exactly with the sizing, so to scale to the person, but that's how ours will fold down and move to be stored. Okay? So, they're actually much easier than I originally had conceptualized.
They're portable.
Okay?
And they're in pieces?
Yeah, they're pieces. So, we're going to have 10, yeah. So, we're going to have 10 of those walls that can each be broken down, and we wrote into the specs that would be possible for two people to be able to break down and move it. So, it wouldn't be a burden to break a wall down, and we're building the packs with a storage area specifically for the shelves in the back. So, that's the walls. The ceiling you'll see on there will be suspended. I'm going to send around this drawing, architectural drawing, is of the pack, and you'll notice two things. One, you'll see three skinny items that look like bananas hanging down from the top. That's the ceiling of it, hey, I'm trying, I'm doing visualizing here, that are hanging from the rigging. Those will stay stored, and when needed, the rigging will be lowered, and they'll come down as the ceiling, that Mrs. Jarvis, you've seen that picture, at the top. So, I'll pass it to you, so you can see that down.
And then the ban shell will need that.
Yeah, so then the walls and the ceiling come together, and there are lights in the ceiling of it, because otherwise it would be covering up our other lighting. Okay? So, when you see the pictures and the drawing, I think it'll make a lot more sense. So, it will be not a burden when we have to have honors night on the stage, you take them away, and we have a storage unit backstage for them. The riggings will take the ceiling of the shell up, and we'll be good to go. When you need it again, the rigging will bring it back down.
Then you bring the walls.
We'll bring the walls back out. And when you see the picture, you can see they have, they have wheels, you'll stabilize them, and you'll have your acoustical shell again.
Questions? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Are these pre-lifted?
The ceilings have lights in them, yes. There, it is much like, very similar to that look right there, and we have a light one as well.
Can, if the need should arise for a reason I can't imagine, we could use the walls without the ceiling, or the ceiling without the walls?
Yeah, I'm pausing because I'm trying to think of a reason why we would, but the rigging could just be brought down for some reason, and you could wheel the wall for some reason.
If, for example, maybe they were playing with a combined band, and it was larger than usual, maybe it wouldn't fit as well, accommodate the walls and the band? You know, as long as there's flexibility there.
And if you think of them each being an individual wall, which, again, conceptually, I originally, when we talked about this, thought of wall. The fact that they're all individualized...
They're panels.
Panels makes it much more flexible.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bradford?
Okay, so all of the stands and holders are included in the price? Everything's included, the, on wheels, the portability of it?
Right, correct.
You don't have to purchase.
That's how we wrote the bid, specific to our, you know, for the sizing and for what we wanted in the pack. And then we even wrote in that we wanted to be able to remove, I think, with ease of two people.
Question, Mr. Sanders?
Who will be, I guess, trained in taking these up and down?
Well, I don't want to talk too much, because I don't have the background, but we have someone that's going to be, do you like to take it?
So, for right now, we'll utilize our custodial staff to do that. We will bring, we will be having discussion with the board later this spring with regard to, you know, taking a look at the PACs and the needs that we have with regard to maintaining the PACs. There's some significant involvement with regard to light, sound, taping, utilization of the stage, things such of this nature. So, we're formulating some thoughts to bring to the board, again, this spring with regard to how will we deal with the regular needs that exist throughout each of the performing arts centers. But for now, we would utilize our current, our current staff.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mrs. Frank?
Do the other high schools that have performing arts centers in our area, do they have the ban shells, most of them, or?
I am fairly certain that Northville, who built their, when they built their high school, has a ban shell that is a little different than this one with regard to its coloring. I think it's got more of like a wood color finish, but I was there recently, and they have a ban shell. It may not be exactly like the model that we're proposing.
Mrs. Bradford?
Okay, sorry to ask so many questions, but this, this picture right here shows the pieces that would come down at the top of the ceiling, but the pictures on that one show a more portable. The one that he has with the, the walls are on a curve, the curve, those look a lot smaller, so...
Again, don't, don't look at these as the exact one we're getting. I wanted to show how they would be mobile.
Okay.
So, those aren't, that's not the exact item that we're getting, because it's not the same as, we ask, we would like to bid, this is what we want, you build them for us. So, we found something that looked similar to how it would be utilized.
The pieces would mainly be walls, because this is going to be, the ceiling part is going to be already built into the PAC.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. So, are these going to be custom-built to suit, to fit each of our PACs?
And our stages are all the same size, so we can have them all built the same size, based upon the request in the bid.
Any other questions? Do we get a piano with ours?
I can, Mr. Archibald, talk to you more about that?
Mr. Francis, in terms of timing, we're done with Franklin, we're in the process of Stevenson, and Churchill will be coming up. Are we going to take delivery of all of these at the same time?
No, we want to be able to take delivery of the one for Franklin, and then when Stevenson is ready, then we'll ask to take delivery of that, and then when Churchill's ready, we'll take delivery of that.
And they agree today.
That was written into the...
So, we don't have to worry about storing these outside someplace?
We, no.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any other questions?
I believe with regard to the questions, we've covered all the portability, how would they be erected and taken down, pictures, and then how's in the rigging? Were there any residual questions? I see the ones we had from the study session, I believe, were all addressed. Okay.
If everybody is in agreement, then we'll put that on regular agenda. And the last item, 3D, I still want to buy this.
It's a deal.
Purchase of the Ford F-350 with plow.
We are recommending the purchase of an F-350 pickup truck with an attached plow from Gornell Ford, who was the low responsible bidder at $33,862 out of the general fund, the maintenance... the maintenance fund portion of the general fund. The use of this truck with plow will be, obviously to push snow. We have 10 in a fleet that we currently have in our district. Two of those are from 1999, two others are from 2002. They've got a lot of pushes in them. The plan would be, the desire of the maintenance department would be in facilities is to replace four of them, and to try to do that once a year. So, to take a four-year schedule and replace the oldest ones. So, right now, this is step one. We would, we would technically not be replacing the 1999. We'd keep the 99 and have 11 in our fleet until it just-
Dies.
Until it dies, yeah. Then we just can have 11 guys on their own pushing snow, but we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't keep breathing life into it as needed. The chassis is not in great shape, et cetera, but it still has some life in it. So, the point being that this is step one, and hopefully a four-year process of getting a new truck and plow to replace our four oldest of the fleet.
Questions? Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I noticed that the current lead time for delivery is 14 to 16 weeks away. I don't think we'll be doing much plowing with these this season.
Probably not, but we definitely wanted to get, yeah, get the ball rolling.
I hope we will.
And get it, yeah. It's raining in January, why can't it snow in June? But, yeah, you're right. By the time we get it, the season will be at its end.
Good, we'll get another year out of them.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
If you were, just a quick mention with regard to the budget, so it talked about the general fund, and it's specifically the maintenance supply budget, equipment budget. As you may recall from the past couple of years, the maintenance budget has had a pretty decent surplus at the end of each year. They have been very, very careful and cautious with their replacement and purchase of materials, and part of that was their planning ahead for some of these larger purchases. So, this will, this is, this is within the budget parameters that they have currently. This is not adding dollars out of the general fund into the maintenance supplier equipment budget. These are existing funds that are part of their budget, and again, they have been very, very judicious with their costs and expenditures over the past number of years, but certainly over the past few years in anticipation for some of the replacement of some of these items. So, these are not new dollars being placed into the maintenance budget.
Okay. Any other questions? And, Mrs. Frank, go ahead.
Just for clarification for the public out there, do we do all our own snow plowing? Do we do all, do we cover every school?
Yes.
The maintenance department does it with these 10 trucks?
Our properties, yes. And we drop snow.
And our building supervisors assist.
Mm-hmm. So, the, at the buildings, yes, they use snow blowers on the sidewalks, and they have some tractors that they can hook a plow to-
At the high schools.
To do at the high schools to push it around at the larger facilities in the high schools.
Okay, but these 10 trucks do all the work?
They get up very early in the morning. They're out there around 4:00 AM, dropping salt today, so they-
Yep.
Thank you.
And this is the correct price, 32.
Yeah.
And this is, this is a new truck with an engine and four wheels, right?
It was-
Wait, was that, was that part of the spec?
Yeah.
I'm trying to find out.
You're getting real specific on that. You can only ask for so much. It was, you should have seen the twinkle in Harry's eye. Let's just put it that way.
I mean, you, it's hard to get an F-150 stripped down for this cause. I mean, that's, that's what's so amazing to me about it.
No, it's, we appreciate, actually, both bids were very reasonable bids, but that was the best one.
Yes, even the other one is not, not bad for what you're getting.
No, sir.
Did you have another question?
My question was, who gets to pick the color?
At that price, we're taking, I don't care what color it is.
We'll take it.
That's a good, no, you can ask, that's a good question to ask.
Just, it was from September, the price, the quote, are they still willing to honor that price? Have we connected with them? Are they still honoring it?
And we will definitely confirm from that with that. This was pushed back due to the holiday season, et cetera, so we brought it in January, but we'll definitely confirm with them that they're okay.
If there are no other questions, everybody in agreement, we'll put this on regular agenda.
Yes.
And with that, President Burton, that concludes building in sight.
Thank you. Onto finance committee, we, I don't have any items listed for finance, Mrs. Jarvis or Mrs. Oquist?
Nothing to add.
No?
No, President Burton.
Same question with the curriculum committee, Mr. Centers?
I don't have any.
No?
We do not.
All righty.